...of May 19th to order, and if you would, stand at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melma?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here.
At this time, we need to have an approval of the agenda, or a motion for the approval of the agenda. But we need it to be amended to add some additional minutes from a closed session that was held on April 21st.
Oh, so we're doing two closed sessions?
We are.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the closed session meeting held on April 21st to the consent agenda. And we have those minutes in front of us?
We do.
And we have the minutes of the meeting? Oh, perfect.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melma?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. In this public comment section, we would ask that your public comments are in regards to the items that are on the agenda this evening. Excuse me.
Michael McCready from Matton, Michigan. I would beg your leave to speak off of, about things not on the agenda, so I can go ahead and go home and watch this on TV, if that's all right. Well, just a couple of things. I noticed I haven't been here for a while due to health issues. But I would like to say that I'm sorry that Mr. Homier isn't here, so he could grin like the Cheshire Cat, seeing as how he looks to me like he's gained about 40 or 50 pounds, eating real good on the city's dollar. The other thing I wanted to speak about was, I'm wondering why Mr. Melma has not resigned, falling on his sword like the Romans. He didn't win his own district, and his district was the district that cost Mayor Barnett the election. And a failure like that, that's pretty much letting everybody down, including yourself. You know, you don't win your district, and you don't bring the election around. And now you sit here and are pretty much a spoiler. I don't understand that. I think, you know, you need to get busy on more important things than what's been going on for the last six years or so. That's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening?
My name's Jeff Harding from Matton, Michigan, as well. I am speaking on behalf of the road closure I'm asking of for my team marathon. You guys have received the information, and this would be the third year, so I don't think there's probably any issues with that. But when I, just this last week, I received a phone call from the city clerk saying that I was going to need insurance coverage for the city Cadillac, which didn't completely surprise me, but just really bad timing. Been in touch with Marcus. Last year, my race was held the last weekend of June. And that next Monday, I called and talked to the city clerk, or the county clerk, and she said that they normally don't schedule that far ahead. I said, "Well, when's a good time to call?" And they said, "About the first of the year." So December, I sent a letter to Marcus, sent an email. First letter, waited a couple weeks. I didn't hear anything back. The next thing I heard was from about a dozen runners saying that, asking me, "Am I really holding my marathon on the date that was posted, was advertised, sent out mailings, seven different websites?" Because Three Disciplines was also on that date. Then I emailed. Marcus got ahold of me right away with that problem. And I was told that with, I think it was the city clerk and someone in the police, both retired. It was by mistake. My date was given away. We both talked and thought, "Well, two wrongs don't really make a right. Stick with my date, well, come up with another date, sorry." Last year at this time, I had 70 runners signed up. That was more than my total of the first year. I ended up with about 160. This year, I'm down to 24 right now. So I'm about half to one-third, somewhere in that range. Adding on the cost of insurance, I was told that's kind of a normal thing for all big events. I by no means, right now, I'm looking at a big event. It was an unfortunate accident. I still want to hold the race. You can't just do a marathon one year and then not the next. Marathoners prepare a year ahead of time. So I want to hold my race, but the extra cost of the insurance with so few runners is a real burden to me this year. So far, in my first two years, I've made a total from race proceeds, negative $650. My first year, we lost 700, which I knew I was going to. I wanted to put on a first-class race. I had some sponsors. So I didn't lose money, but the race didn't cover itself. I still donated money to the backpack program here in Cadillac, because I'm from Matton, and holding a race in your city. But we have a lot of crossover traffic, you know, where our people do shopping, and they're grocery shopping, and walking around the lake. I still want to donate, still want to do all this, but it's tough. And then my other concern was making sure that there's some sort of process to have my race on the same date, year after year after year. Whatever that may be, if it can be the last weekend of June, which it was, great. If it has to be the weekend before, I can live with that as well. I just need a consistent date, so that way the marathoners can plan ahead. You know, if you're a marathoner, most normal people, sane people, do one or two of them a year. To be bouncing around on dates, I'm never going to be able to grow my race. Any questions? I don't know who's next.
This is public comment.
Okay.
But when we get to your request on the agenda,
Okay.
if there's more discussion to be had, we'll do it then.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
William Bisch, Petri Road Cadillac. I was prepared to do this first. I didn't realize the agenda didn't say about things that were only, the public comment was only for the agenda. I just got two brief comments to make. First one is toward the mayor. In an effort to further bolster confidence in our city government, I would like to ask that the mayor recuse herself from any activity regarding the Blackburn-Barnett case, as I feel there's a definite conflict of interest. Second item is in regards to the city manager and the MDOT property located right here in front of the city building. And I'm assuming that in the last four years, or two weeks that has passed, that the issue will be updated at some point this evening. And I'd also like to know if there is, I'd like to hear an update as to when this is going to be resolved to the city's advantage. Thank you for your time, and I apologize for being out of format.
Is there anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Okay, at this time, we are needing to approve the consent agenda. But what you have before you this evening is also the minutes to the closed sessions. One held on May 5th, and the other one held on April 21st. And so what we need to do is take a few moments and read through those minutes. And then, if there are no questions, concerns, or updates, we will make one motion to approve all.
Mayor and council, this is a quick reminder. If there are any with respect to the closed session, the council would need to adjourn into closed session. Then we would also need to try and connect with the city attorney. He was not coming this evening, so.
Thank you. Did you get through everything? Did you get through everything? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Melma?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. We're going to need to put these back in the envelope, and then I'll hand those back to Sandy after. I'll pass them down to the agenda.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the, to consider approval of the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2015.
Owen?
I want to introduce the... Sure. Yep, this is the culmination of the budget process here tonight. So if you recall, we've had, beginning the first meeting in April, two work sessions. We had a public hearing, the second meeting in April, as required by our city charter. The only change from the original proposed budget was a small reduction in the city attorney department of the general fund, as per our discussion in the work session. So other than that, the numbers of the budget will be just as they were when it was initially proposed. So tonight, we adopt the General Appropriations Act by ordinance, as required, not before the 15th day of May, or not before the 15th of May, and prior to the end of May. So that's how our charter sets it out. So in compliance with that, then we adopt tonight by the General Appropriations Act.
Thank you, Owen. Okay, then what we need is a motion to approve the resolution.
We need a public hearing, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just open and close, just briefly, yep.
You were just briefing. Okay. Is there anyone from the public that has any comments? About the budget, specifically? Yes. Okay, and was there anything else from the council?
I just wanted to, again, note for Owen Roberts to thank you for the way you present the budget, and how clear it is. I know we've talked about that before, but it's laid out very well. I like how you make it easier for the public to understand. And I want to appreciate that, and especially with the tight funds, how you incorporate into it. I did want to, more specifically, though, for Mr. Petcha, just verify, I know this year I brought a concern about making sure we appropriate correctly. And I really feel this current budget with the, as we've addressed with the legal, that hasn't been, and again, not by council, but that we have a budgeted amount this year for legal. I hope that we can stay under it, but when we've got eight or nine, we have eight or nine employee-related items and other things. I just want to make sure, when I approve this budget, it's understanding that, unlike this budget, the minute we go over, we get notification that we have to appropriate funds or approve the expenditures like we have to in the charter. And I'm comfortable approving this under that understanding that we understand we're going to get notified of that.
Yes.
Let me take that one step further. You know, we can, the minute we know that we might be going over in a certain area, that would be a better way to manage it, instead of waiting until the time that we get to that point. So we'll have to follow it more closely.
More proactive than reactive, so.
Yeah, thanks for adding that. That's exactly the point of just making sure we're not uncompliant, and of course, none of us aware of it.
Right.
Making sure we're given that direction.
As you've said, Mr. Stevens, Councilmember Stevens, that is our primary job, is to do that. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? If not?
Then I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance number 2014-05, General Appropriations Act for the fiscal year 2015.
Before we do that, do I need to close the public hearing?
Probably.
If we could just back up a moment, then we're going to close the public...
We left a moment.
We're going to close the public hearing. Nice job.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and then...
Then I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance number 2014-05, General Appropriations Act for the fiscal year of 2015.
Support.
Wonderful. Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melma?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Then, on our agenda, the next thing we are going to talk about is communication.
And there are several.
There are several.
The first request is for a street closure on Chestnut from the Junior High parking lot to Selma on June 28th, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:30. And for the closure of the Veterans Memorial parking lot from June 25th through June 28th for the Lumberman Triathlon.
And Mr. Harding, was that...
That was that.
The triathlon, okay. Yeah, so now it would be appropriate if we...
Is this a good time to talk about the mix-up?
Mm-hmm.
There was a mix-up.
Yes. Okay, so...
Well said.
Yeah, well said. And Mr. Harding and I did have a conversation about it. The Three Disciples, Three Disciples, Three Disciplines?
Yes, disciplines.
The Three Disciplines race was much more significant in size. It had already been given its approval. It was a mix-up in between switching from the former city clerk to the current city clerk, as well as with the retirement of former Captain Wolfile. For some reason, his date did not get on our calendar. We resolved it for this year, moving forward. And then I had indicated to Mr. Harding that we could do everything we could to try to accommodate the date that he would like to have as we move forward from now, so.
Is the weekend that the Three D race is being held, is that a consistent date for them?
It is a change.
Yeah, they moved it ahead a month. The last few years, it's been end of July.
And so last year, excuse me, we're talking right now, thank you. So last year, when he sent his letter in on September 13th, he didn't give us a date?
I'm not sure. It wasn't involved.
There's a, there's a letter in our packet from Kenny Crowell, September 13th of last year, saying he wants to do the same thing next year. I'm just looking to see if there's a date in there. Not that it matters, but I thought, well, if he requested it back then, then that might make this a little bit easier, but... Yeah, there's dates on there. Dates are on there. On the letter from September 13th?
I think that's the other one.
He has a proposed date on the second page, not on his letter, but... It says proposal and information. There's a date right at the second line there.
The one you're looking at, where does it have that? The same, they want the same weekend?
It doesn't.
It's right.
I don't know. I can't tell if these came together or not. I was just looking at this one.
There's the two.
That came on September 13th, but maybe he sent the whole packet in at that time, and then would have had the date on it.
The other one...
Like I said, I don't know if it matters at this point. It's unfortunate.
Well, so I was wondering that, too. So when did the other submit their request?
The request from Mr. Harding came in, I believe, prior to the Three Disciplines racing request, but it never made it into the city clerk's scheduling system. The Three Disciplines racing event, and their request then came forward, was processed and approved. It wasn't until sometime thereafter that Mr. Harding contacted the city to find out where his request was, and that's when we realized that it never made it into our, into our calendar, which is why it never came before council. In talking with Mr. Harding, he completely understood the complication that that created, especially given the nature of the other event, the Lumberman event. And it was discussed and decided upon that he would be able to move his date this coming, this coming race season. And then, looking forward, we would maintain the date.
Give him back his original weekend?
Yeah.
Give him back his original weekend, or maintain the date that he does this year?
It's up to, it's up to Mr. Harding.
I also have some questions and concerns about the whole insurance thing, because when the Earth Day thing happened, apparently, somebody in the visitors bureau or something had told the committee for Earth Day, like, days before the event, that they needed to have insurance. And I know there's been many events in the city that have not had insurance. Is this a policy change?
I don't know if you want to call it a policy change, but when we do special events, we do tell the event organizers that they need to have coverage, because they're not covered under the city's general liability, city's general liability insurance protection. Unless you've heard something different since we've last talked, I don't think, Owen, that that's changed.
Well, they've tightened up on us a bit, actually, our insurance carrier. And actually, in a conversation with them, you know, basically, if there was an event, and we didn't let them know, and they didn't kind of determine, "You need to get additional coverage on this from the person holding the event," that our coverage could basically cease to exist at that point for that, for the time of that event. And then, I would assume then, if we would be sued or something, we'd be, you know, liable out of general funds of the city. You know, the definition of what does and doesn't require additional liability insurance is gray at best, even in conversations with our insurance carrier. So they, you know, he makes mentions of things like community events, you know, concerts where they're just going to get down there and hold a concert, and let people know they're having it, and people can come if they want, or at their will. But the events where they have, for example, animals in the park, or obviously, other vendors in the park, people setting things up, and then explicitly now, races and events like that, where there's a special event, the risk is clearly increased, they say you need to have additional coverage, so.
And what is the approximate cost of that?
Probably, you know, I think in another organization we were, we were working with, it was like $400. So it's, I mean, it's, especially for some of these groups that, you know, are volunteer, and they don't have big budgets, and, you know...
So normally, when are people advised of the fact that they have to have that insurance?
Yeah, you know, we're trying to, as the insurance has gotten a little more serious with us, we're trying to do it right from the, right from the beginning.
From the application?
Right.
When you apply. When you apply.
Well, that makes, for a lot of these groups, I know that, like the Earth Day folks, they've got like $12.
Yeah, I met with them on, on a couple of occasions through that process and it was, you know, again, they're, they're very nice about it and, and, you know, try to be very compassionate and understanding about it, but, you know, I'm getting information from our carrier saying, you know, basically, you wouldn't, you know, you'd be at significantly higher risk at that point, so.
So that's, for those groups, then that's just an added need to seek out someone who would help sponsor the event by paying for the insurance. But at least if people know that early enough, you know, people who are passionate about those events, you know, those stuff, what I was thinking was, I mean, $400 is a lot of money, but I was sitting here thinking it was really an astronomical amount, so. But from a sponsorship standpoint, maybe that would be more reasonable to people.
Especially knowing in advance.
Yeah, the advance is important.
They're not paying the city the money, there would be...
No, I understand.
They pay an insurance carrier.
I understand.
What a racket.
Yeah. Okay, so I kind of jumped the gun there a little bit because we were talking about the Lumberman, and so that's the first one. And then the second one, the second communication will actually be Mr. Harding's.
But they are related.
They are related, okay, yeah.
So then what was the, Marcus, what was your final determination of which one to allow to go, the date that they...
I told Mr. Harding that, and I don't recall which date it was, but whatever date he wanted to have moving forward in future years, we would be willing to set that aside. Similar to some other events that tend to come back, we don't, we currently have not set anything aside yet for any other event, but we do have events that come every Memorial Day, like the Stride for Strive Race is a, is a good, for instance, in that it would make sense for stability's sake, for the organization's sake, for being able to market and do the event on an annual basis, if they had a date to think of a closing.
Well, hey, you know, I'm sorry that it happened the way that it did with all of the change in personnel, but hopefully that the thought that moving forward, we'll be able to commit that same weekend to Lake Cadillac Team Marathon moving forward, that will help. Okay, so the first, the first request was for the Lumberman Triathlon. So would anyone be willing to make the motion to approve the closure for that one?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Chestnut Street from the Junior High parking lot to Selma on June 28th from 7:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And the closure of the Veterans Memorial Parking Lot from June 25th through June 28th for the Lumberman Triathlon.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please? I just want to say, the reason why I'm supporting this is because I know that a lot of people are already registered for this race and they're counting on it. There's a lot of triathletes out there that are counting on this, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a pickle.
Kind of too far down the road.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pickle.
I agree, thank you. Could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second request is from Jeff Harding for a street closure on Lake Street between Cass and Harris on June 22nd from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the Lake Cadillac Team Marathon.
Okay. Did you want to see anything else?
I appreciate the concern on the date. I wouldn't want to change from my current date as set, just like they wouldn't want to change, you know, you'd have athletes both upset on both sides. It sounded like from the discussion that the insurance would need to be covered for this year?
Yes.
Still would, yeah.
Okay, yes. As I said, you know, from the very beginning, knowing that right from the very beginning would be, as you guys said, very useful, not with one month to go.
Right.
Yep, thank you.
Absolutely.
If I may ask, Mr. Harding?
Yeah.
Just with respect to clarification for dates in the future, is it the third or fourth weekend you want to...
Well, as coming here tonight, I just was in conversation with these, this couple right here and...
We don't know them.
The possibility of combining with the Cadillac Freedom Festival is something I seriously need to look at.
Oh, yeah.
That if...
Great idea.
If they already have insurance and I need insurance and they've got a bounce house in the city park and marathoners bring kids in and they need something to entertain them while they're outrunning.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, right now I don't see any downside at all, but I guess...
You don't have to give us your answer.
Yeah, so yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at that, but as long as I can get a date, you know, set, I'll give you guys, you know, a couple of weeks' notice here and then I'll let you know what date I'm looking at for future years.
When a door closes, a window opens.
Nice.
And you're okay with the 22nd, or was that date?
That's, that's the date that I want for this year, that's the date I've been advertising, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Cass and Harris on June 22nd from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the Lake Cadillac Team Marathon.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is from Reverend Sante from the Crown of Life Lutheran Church for a street closure. It would actually be on Lake Street between Cass and Harris on August 16th from 4:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. for a community concert.
Is anybody here from there?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Cass and Harris on August 16th from 4:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. for a community concert.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next two requests are for the Freedom Festival. The first one is to request from Joy Bandee to, Bandee to display a banner from June 30th to July 7th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to allow the Cadillac Tour, Visitors Bureau to display a banner from June 30th to July 7th for the Freedom Festival.
Support. Do we have a roll call, Sandy?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes, did I get that right? Is it the...
Cadillac Tour, festivals and events.
Yeah, let me change that to the festivals and events instead of the Visitors Bureau. Sorry, halfway through the vote. What do you do now?
Rewind.
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
I think we all got the intention.
Mayor and council, if I may just insert, with respect to this next item of an extra request, I believe we did this last year as well, given the, all the moving pieces with the Freedom Festival itself, council had authorized staff to make, essentially to make changes on the fly with respect to some of the lot closures, to extend the times accordingly if we needed to. And it's, we tried to word it in a way that essentially would accomplish that, to give us the necessary ability of adjusting things as, as maybe needed should things change on the fly with respect to this.
But they wouldn't change.
Never.
Yeah, okay. I was wondering why there were two separate ones, so.
I didn't do very good with the last one. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize a city manager to coordinate with his staff requested street closures, parking lot closures, and other activities needed for the Freedom Festival.
Support.
Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Miss Gabby, she has something she wants to say.
Forgot to ask her to tell us.
Good evening, Mayor Philkins and council members. Gabby Chapman, and again, I am representing the community as the chairperson for the Cadillac Freedom Festival again this year. Can I approach?
Sure.
This is the tentative schedule. The festival has grown from like one and a half days to starting on Thursday night and ending Sunday evening. Excuse me. And just packed with all kinds of stuff, some new things, new this year, Cinderella is going to make an appearance in the park and have a princess party with some people. I'm pleased to announce that this year, we are going to use all local music talent for the festival and...
Disc golf tournament?
Hmm?
Disc golf tournament.
Oh, and we've added a disc golf tournament this year and...
Is it at Diggins or is it going to be out at...
It's going to be both. It's going to be at Kenwood and Diggins. It's kind of like a double elimination.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see. We're going to have an imagination station. The Home Depot has graciously, graciously volunteered to put some stuff together. The kids can pay $3, make a craft and take it home, be holiday-related, which is kind of neat. Again, we're going to have the monster truck rides. That was a huge success last year, so. And I am looking for volunteers to go in the dunk tank, if anybody is so inclined to do that, please let me know and...
Are there any jumpers here? We'll volunteer.
It's a good moneymaker. People are paying attention.
And I just want to say that I really appreciate the support from the city council for the festivals and events in our area, so, and I think you will be, I encourage you to come out that weekend and spend some time in the park, so. Our vendors in the last two years, two years ago, the first year that I chaired this committee, we had 13 vendors. Last year, we had 33 vendors and we have even more coming this year, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully next year, we'll add a triathlon.
I think that's pretty awesome.
During the fireworks.
During the fireworks, yes. That'll really...
Oh, and one thing that's not on here because it came in, it was confirmed at the last minute tonight, or this afternoon, was the Children's Protection Council is going to do a garden walk during this event also, so.
Nice, nice. Okay, we already voted on that, so that takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item, I'm actually going to ask Mayor Philkins to introduce.
Okay, sure. We had a request come in from Mike Dolek, many of you know Mike, and he brought forward the state pledge. And the state pledge is, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state for which it stands, two beautiful peninsulas united by a bridge of steel, where equal opportunity and justice to all is our ideal." Mike thinks that it would be really nice if we could make that a part of our opening to our council meetings, and so I told him that I would bring it here and put the idea out to the council and see if it's something that we would like to incorporate, incorporate into our meetings and if we would like to do it at each meeting or maybe once a month, and just get your thoughts.
That's what I was going to suggest, is maybe once in a while. I like it and it draws attention to the great state that we reside in and have a municipality in.
Right. And I also, you know, when I, when I saw this, it's, you know, it's educational from a, from a kid's standpoint to know that this pledge is out there and where it came from, so.
Yeah, I think in the third, fourth grade, you know, they do it. Because when he brought the thing to me, he asked, and I said, I think the last time I remember doing that is like in third or fourth grade.
Yeah.
Where it's part of the Michigan.
Yeah.
And I thought, it's a neat, it's a neat idea. As he mentions, it's not something that a lot of the communities, if any, do, would make it unique.
Maybe we can do it when our Boy Scouts are here or other youth groups.
So for special events?
You know, how long would it take to do it?
It wouldn't take for...
And I got to tell you that if we don't do it regularly, I'm going to forget.
We're going to have to take the words in front of me for a while.
So why don't we just add it? I mean, how long's it going to take?
Mike brought this in front of, last week Wednesday, issued a copy, he was there and presented it, and I think it's a great idea. I think once a month, you know, would that be frequent enough or could be more, whatever? I don't have a problem with it.
Why not just do it whenever we meet, right?
Let's just pledge to this one, that one. So then which do you do first?
United States.
United States.
The United States and then that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just for, I don't know if it was in your packet or not, I went out and did a little reading today, it's, this pledge was actually written and copyrighted by Harold G. Colburn, and it was accepted into law by the Michigan Legislature in Public, Public Act 165 of June 13th, 1972.
So there you go.
We'll add it.
So we'll add it.
We'll probably need it in our packet here until we get it.
Yeah.
Like on the cover.
We'll also have copies available.
Oh, that'll be nice. Yeah, that'd be nice.
That'd be a nice thing, too, when we do our Arbor Day, where the kids come in and they're, you know, having to be part of it, their little program, too. They probably know it all, they probably know it.
They may not, but we could post it on the... Maybe we could practice tonight by ending our meeting with it.
Okay, if we can use the words.
Keep, keep, keep the packets open.
Okay. Quick, memorize it.
That's right.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, thank you, Marcus.
We'll turn right here.
And thank you, Mr. Dolek.
Oh, absolutely.
We can share and so other people...
Mike couldn't be here this evening, but I'm sure he'll be through.
Yes.
All right, where are we?
The next item, mayor, members of the city council, is a recommendation regarding professional financial and compliance auditing services. The city is required, as everybody knows, to have annual independent, an annual independent audit of all of our financial records, and for many, many years, the local law firm, or excuse me, the local CPA firm of Barrett Cotter and Bishop, P.C., has been providing that service. The city did receive five proposals, they are in your packet and are attached accordingly. We did go out and actively solicit new proposals for that service. The recommendation, and I'm going to skip down to the recommendation, but the recommendation is that a five-year contract for the professional financial and compliance auditing services be awarded to a company called Gaybridge and Company in accordance with their proposal. The proposal itself, or the chart that is provided, I am going to ask Owen to just quickly run through it, only because there's a difference between some of the, some of the figures that we had received based upon... that we had received based upon a single auditing year versus a non-single auditing year. And it is a five-year agreement. Some of the firms had escalators. Gabridge actually did not. Owen, if you could maybe just clarify that chart for the benefit of the public and council, that would be great.
Yep, so, the, the financial audit portion of the bid is absolutely required every year. So, that's the core price. The single audit is a, like it says in the communication, a compliance audit, which adds some additional procedures and report from the auditors if we reach a certain threshold of federal funds expenditures. Right now, I think for, either this is the last year or our next fiscal year, I think December, or January 1st of 2015, a new threshold takes place, takes effect, which is $750,000. We'll, we'll rarely reach that threshold. We did reach it last year when we got the DWRF funds, because a portion of those are federal funds. As you know, we're, we're looking to go back out for those again, so we'll probably reach the threshold one or two out of five of, of the years. So, I think for the purposes of evaluating the proposals, you have to consider those costs as, as needed for each year, because you don't really know if they're needed. So, I think to, to get a true evaluation, you need to include them. So, including those, obviously Gabridge did not bid extra for that service, and when you include the service, that makes Barrett Cotter number two, followed by Yo and Yo, Abraham and Gaffney, and then Raymond. We are, I did include in the packet a copy of our standard services agreement, which basically just holds the contractor back to the requirements of both the RFP document and the proposal that they submitted. We are asking that council award it at this point for the, the five-year term, which was one of the, the options in the bid. In the service agreement, if the contractor does not meet the, the professional requirements and standards of the job, there is a, there is an out clause in there. So, we're comfortable with, with the recommendation for the five years, knowing that if, should they fail to, to do what they need to do, we can, we can get out of the contract. We did call all of the references that they provided, and a couple of others that I was aware of. We brought the audit manager and one of the principals from Grand Rapids of the Gabridge Company up for an interview. We're, we're satisfied with, with what we heard. I would say mostly relied on, on references from, from our peers in the, in the municipal finance world. Probably the closest one they do is Big Rapids. Big Rapids was an important reference because they also do the award with the GFOA. And so Gabridge has submitted and been awarded certificates similar to what we get each year from the GFOA. So, there are additional requirements to, to get that, and they have provided those. So, you wanna make sure we, we recognize the relationship that we've had for a long, long time with, with Barrett Cotter, and Scott, and Ryan, and Trent, and their team. Really have done a fantastic job, and we're, we're sorry to not be in front of you recommending them, but the, the process is what the process is. And we knew that, and they knew that going in, and we've met with them, I think, and so, so nothing is coming as a surprise. I think both sides are disappointed. But we are, at this point, recommending, based on the, the low bid and the, the positive references, Gabridge &amp; Company.
I think it's important to note that Gabridge &amp; Company was the low bidder in both the three-year proposal and the five-year proposal, with and without the single audit costs in there. So, there's just really no question.
Correct, yep.
And it is, too bad we can't stick with a local firm.
Yeah. Especially one that we've had such a good relationship with.
There, you said there is an out cost in case things don't...
Yep, there's kind of a generic one. You know, just kinda both sides can, can agree in writing to terminate. And then there's due to default, and, you know, there, there are very clear professional standards, obviously, in, in doing a financial audit. And so, both generically, if, if, if we tell them, listen, we're, we're not, we're not satisfied, and, you know, I think, I think we could come to that resolution. And certainly, in a default situation, we're, we're automatically entitled to be out of the, out of the agreement. That would be section 10 of the contract. All of those, those clauses are there.
And this is a, I mean, there's nothing in the process still going, so this agreement isn't postdated a certain time. It would be kind of effective...
No, we'll, we'll ask the mayor to sign it right away, and in fact, they'll, you know, I've talked to, to the company, and depending on the action tonight, they, they need to, probably in the next two weeks, they'll be here for a preliminary visit to, to start collecting some, some data, so. Yeah, it'll start, it'll start right away, so.
You know, we had the, we had that leniency with the 5% we changed. This, of course, is outside of the 5%.
30%.
But it does give a question down the road is, if we're willing, I mean, they're giving them an opportunity to match it if the 5% at some point should be looked at.
Right. I'll make a motion to award a five-year contract for professional financial and compliance auditing services to Gabridge &amp; Company in accordance with their proposal.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, mayor members of the city council. This next item, Sandy, if you could bring it up there, thank you, is with respect to the temporary relocation of refuse receptacles to a parking space on the northwest side of the line as indicated in the highlighted area. This is to accommodate the relocation of, Jerry, is there one or two dumpsters?
There'll be two dumpsters.
Okay, two, two dumpsters from behind the Clam Lake Beer Company area into the space. There were some issues with respect to smells, as well as to help accommodate grilling of food products during, I will say generically, but during this grilling season. This is essentially a sort of a pilot test for us. The DDA has had some off-and-on conversation regarding trying to look at a sort of more formalized, centralized location for refuse receptacles to try to move them all off of Elk Avenue, put them in an area where merchants can access them in a camouflage type of covered space. Is there gonna be any, anything done at this point, do you recall, regarding this, this space, Jerry?
In terms of enclosure and so forth? Possibly. Because this is temporary, we really don't want a lot done there, and because it would end up potentially turning it into a permanent kind of location. And the DDA is looking at, not only for this area, but for several blocks, looking at a, at some common dumpster areas, trash receptacle areas. This has been precipitated by several businesses that, instead of having a dumpster behind each store, you know, why not create some common dumpster areas where, for example, the businesses within a block can access it, no one else can, just, just they. And we're looking at some potential designs. Grant Haven, for example, has a, I was hoping to have some photos, but they're not here yet. They've got some really interesting structures, very attractive, believe it or not, so. But in this case, as Marcus mentioned, if you've gone to the Clam Lake Beer Company, the two dumpsters are right by their, their rear entrance, which is where the majority of customers come in. They have no other location on site, and they do wanna create an outdoor patio grilling area this summer. So, we took this to the DDA, and on the DDA, there are other merchants within that block, and they were fully supportive of the idea of, well, let's try something. It's gonna be on a temporary basis. It's, you know, a positive move in terms of something we can do for this particular business that's been doing extremely well. We hope to see it replicated in the future. So, we're just looking to, to get your permission and to really let staff work with them in terms of, of timing and, you know, what sort of materials might surround it and so forth.
How temporary is temporary?
Just the grilling season.
So, we're gonna try it out pretty much for the summer?
For the two, next two weeks.
Yeah, yeah. It won't be out there this winter.
We're all hoping summer falls on a weekend this year.
If we do have summer, we may not have it this winter.
I'm probably working. It won't be a weekend. It'll be a Monday or Tuesday.
And, Ms. Jerry, just to reiterate, you know, the DDA was very supportive. In fact, they were almost saying, hey, let's just go find a, a permanent one, but this is...
Let's try it out.
Let's try it out, let's see how it works.
Yeah, and we're doing some designs right now. And as you know, we're hoping to reconfigure that parking lot, so we're in the process of, as part of, part of those concepts, design concepts, we're looking at the potential for a, a common trash receptacle dumpster area, and enclosed, aesthetically pleasing.
That makes sense.
Et cetera, so this will help in the meantime.
And you said it's just for the businesses there? Is it just for Clam Lake?
Right now, this is just be oriented to the Clam Lake Beer Company, which the DDA is aware. And we would require them to, to make it a locking kind of device, which they can easily get, so that not just anybody can come along and dump, okay? We don't wanna create a dump yard right here. And if it doesn't work out, if there are some issues, then they'll move it back.
And I think, just for clarification, it's a good question, just for clarification, too, the businesses are all responsible for their own refuse removal. So, unlike the residential program that we have where the city contracts out with a single hauler, it's possible that each of those businesses has their own independent, different company. I think some of them are using the same hauler, but they all do it all on their own. So, as a part of looking towards the future, we're gonna do whatever we can to try to facilitate some common, you know, common sharing, so.
Good. Well, I have, I have noticed that that's, those are more, the parking is all in the back there, and to have to walk past the dumpsters to enter is kind of a drag.
So, they have to walk past them now to get into the facility?
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
But as, but as the weather gets warmer, it's gonna get nasty.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And they have looked for alternat, there, there aren't any alternatives in that area. There just aren't.
Right.
Yeah, there's gonna be more sun right there.
Well, there's that. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the temporary placement of a waste receptacle in the city parking lot as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Thank you. The final item under the manager's report this evening is to request the council set a special session at 5:15 PM on June 2nd for the purpose of going into a closed session to discuss a written confidential legal opinion with the city attorney.
And we're not gonna know what that is regarding.
I was just gonna ask the same question.
Similar to the conversation that we had at our meeting a couple of weeks ago, publicly, we're not able to, to put that on there, but I did email council confidentially last week on it.
Well, this is, it's your opinion. I, I still...
City attorney's opinion.
Well, it's his opinion. We all have ours. You have yours, apparently, because I, I still see no, I see no harm by us putting out there what it's on. It's not like we're giving away secrets or special inside sources to know what it's on. I, I still don't understand that, but we have to remember the Open Meetings Act is minimum requirements. This one's, probably you could find people that say we're not complying by doing this. I don't know why we don't just put more information for the public. And I don't know which one you're referring to from a couple of weeks ago, but, you know...
The, the council meeting a couple of weeks ago, when a similar question came up, and the city attorney advised about the confidential nature of the opinion and why you don't put the, the topic out there publicly.
And I was thinking we had some follow-up discussion about being more open, and thus all concurring that being more open is not a problem.
I don't think we did related to that particular issue.
Right.
I think we did related to another issue.
Right.
Which, yes.
I know, I, I don't know either, which one, but...
Did you say you sent an email a couple of weeks ago?
No, last week.
Last week?
Well, perhaps, you know, if you're, if you're still uncomfortable with this, perhaps it's better that we have this conversation when Mike is here. So, if your questions, if you still have that concern.
I was gonna say, I think, right now, the intent is to get this on the schedule.
Right, so...
I would hope that when we post it and when we go into closed session, it would be specific. I still think ironically, that even though we've had altering opinions on, on what standards meet the Open Meetings Act, it's a minimum. That's why they call it the Sunshine Act to put more light on it, and I just see, we've been getting a lot of questions from the public, and I would concur, the more secretive we are, we're just gonna continue to have the questions going, but my opinion. But you're right, this is just setting it for that night.
Okay, could we get a motion to set the meeting?
Oh, all right. Everybody's asleep at the wheel today. I'll make a motion to schedule a special session on June 2nd, 2014, at 5:15, for the purpose of going into closed session to discuss a written confidential legal opinion with the city attorney. I would also like to say at that time, if more information can be shared, that that would probably be not a bad idea.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. And tonight we have some, or one, adoption of ordinance and resolution. This evening, it's, adopt a resolution to amend the 2014 General Appropriations Act.
You're waiting to see how long it stays silent the first time it's...
Sorry, I'm sorry about that. We were talking out of class. I apologize.
Lost.
You did, you got us. Yes, the appropriations ordinance, resolution to amend the fiscal year 2014 General Appropriations Act is where we're at right now. And Owen, you were gonna run through quickly the amendments to that?
Yep. The first item in the packet related to this is just the resolution to actually adopt the, the budget amendment in the manner set forth in attached Exhibit A. So, Exhibit A is where you'll find all the details. It starts off with amendments related to three separations of employment, couple of retirements, and a resignation. And so, these are the final benefit payouts. Again, these were... Again, these were, these happened after the beginning of the fiscal year. And we do have a reserve to fund specifically these liabilities. So you'll see the appropriations for the expenditures to make those payments and an appropriation from that reserve for accrued sick and vacation benefits as the payouts happen. So that's the first item. The second item is kind of a cleanup item. This was equipment that was purchased. It was ordered in the prior fiscal year, but it actually came and was invoiced after the year. And that was, that was based on the delivery point from the manufacturer. So it didn't come in time to accrue those expenses or expenditures back into the prior year. So this is just kind of a housekeeping item to clean that up. The next item is the legal services items that we've talked about quite a bit here over the last, last little bit. And so that should appropriate sufficient funds to cover the final expenses in that, in that department. Page two, the next one, some revenue and some expenditures related to a couple of grants and special projects that have taken place for the year. The incubator study grant from the U.S. Department of Agriculture was a $50,000 grant that we had some, some expenditures of the same level, primarily to the University of Michigan in accordance with that. In addition, a technical assistance grant was received from MISTHA for the place plan study. And there was no funds that came as part of that grant, but the, basically then, the technical assistance was, was what was provided pursuant to that. And we incurred about $6,000 of costs. And then this also covers the, the cost of the memorial placed down by the fountain for fallen public safety officers. Next, major street fund, primarily, or I guess all of this, this amendment is related to winter maintenance expenditures. It starts out with some additional revenue. We did receive just under $50,000 from the state of Michigan appropriated for additional winter maintenance costs. And this was just received in the last couple of weeks. And so it, we're recognizing the receipt of that revenue. In addition, the state trunk line expenses are reimbursed from the state. So with some additional matching expenditures that they've, they've promised to reimburse, there will be some, some additional revenue for that. And then the detailed items, the winter maintenance is what, what's paid for from the, the motor vehicle highway funds. And then the state, where it says Department State-Winter Maintenance, those are the expenses that will be reimbursed from the state of Michigan. Kind of the same story for the local street fund, some additional revenue that came from the state of Michigan. And all of that and a little bit more eaten up by winter maintenance expenditures. The next one is the capital projects fund, and this is to kind of do the same thing that we did for the $30,000 in extrication equipment. These were, these were expenditures that were authorized and appropriated in fiscal year 2013, primarily for the reconstruction of Cedar Street. These were, were bills that, again, were not received in time as the project wrapped up right after the end of the fiscal year. So we were not able to accrue those back into the prior fiscal year. So it's just kind of a transfer essentially of that appropriation to the current fiscal year. Page four, water and sewer fund. These recognize some, some legal fees for the costs related to some, some areas specific to the utilities fund, primarily the Borsma suit and portions of the annexation fees that were incurred. We did have some, some higher-than-expected repairs and maintenance to some vehicles. One of those, if you recall, was for a tractor that came and was like $8,000 that council approved. And then finally, the, or next, I guess, the water service maintenance. This is mostly costs that we incurred because of the, the winter and the, the freezings of the water lines and the, the costs that we incurred, mostly prior to the run water notice, when it was still our responsibility to thaw out those, those water lines. Some costs were incurred after, if they were, if we had any city-owned lines that froze, we had to incur some costs to, to clean those up. A little bit more detail will be given to you as far as what we had to do and the operations, operational impacts. I think Jeff is planning on providing a pretty thorough report to council at the second meeting in June, which will be after the last water bill adjustment is made. So there'll be a lot more detail on, on the specifics of how that impacted operations in that, in that report. And then finally, some additional maintenance costs for, for the water distribution vehicles as well. Again, that's one that's hard to predict. We had some, some significant breakdowns this year. So that's, that's kind of the summary of what we're, we're asking for. And be happy to take any questions at this time.
I did, I know this will probably shock a lot of you, the questionnaire I'm going to, but the legal costs. I wanted to, I was not clear on this. Where do we, where are you actually getting the extra funds from to put into that? Is that...
We don't have any matching revenues for that. And so that will just be taken out primarily from reserves on hand.
So on a fund balance concerning the charter, usually we would have to approve each expenditure separately when we're going to a fund balance?
No, sure.
Versus just, because, you know, I'm hoping next year, we don't get in this situation that you've got to bring this, Marcus, to us before. But are we looking, number one, are we going to stay under the $285,000 even this year with what we're at now and, and where we're going to end up? We've got, I know, probably some big costs with the grievances that came in this month. And I bet you some of those other six or seven are going to start. But is that $285,000, are we still going to be going over from that?
I hope not.
Do we know what our total is now, where we're at with that?
It's in the 230, 235 range.
That was at the end of the quarter? Or would that be, include April? Do you know?
Yeah, I think that includes April.
And this isn't by, you're, us approving this, isn't you feeling that we're giving authority to each of those expenditures by the grievances or the employment-related items? You're, I want to make sure you're not taking this as a way that you can go back and say, council approved this amendment, so they're in agreement on all, because we haven't had a lot of actual time to make a decision on those. But is that how you understand it as well? Or do you see this approval as saying that's our go-ahead on all those?
I think if you're asking a question about whether or not the city council will have an opportunity to approve the city getting involved in sort of, I guess, future litigation, then from our prior conversations, as a part of our budget workshops, I think we understand that council wants to be able to get in on the ground floor earlier on before we get into some type of major legal issue, whether we are defending or whether we're pursuing, I guess, is perhaps the way to, to try to characterize it. With respect to any expenditure, whether it's in the general fund or not, we have our purchasing procedures that are in place that dictate how we acquire the services. So I'm not, I think we're on the same page.
Well, I just, I mean, I'm saying this as a council for us to get the information, because this is going to be an issue going forward. And I think we, we need to go back to the basics and just make sure we're following the process of the charter and, and those expenditures so we, we can be involved faster, because at the end of the day, it's going to be put on our five sets of shoulders.
Well, I think it goes all the way back to the beginning of when these things begin.
Yes.
We, as a council, say, advise whether we move forward or we don't move forward. And so it's at that point in time where we make a commitment to some funds to make that Moving forward, when we have our sessions, our education session, goal-setting sessions, I think that we need to work together to clarify what our expectations are and the timing of when that information is disseminated to us.
Yes.
But in regards to this, I think that, you know, when this all started, the council voted to move forward with these things. And if we expected something different, then we should be having those discussions at that time.
Well, and I guess, and you're right on some, but I'm looking at the eight or nine employee, employee-related ones where we really haven't been brought in. And, but I agree with you that at those steps, we should be. But we have some that have been being dealt with now that we haven't had any
Okay.
Clear direction. But you're right, a lot of this is from the past and the processes and the, you know, from a year ago or two years ago. And you're absolutely right. But I just want to make it clear, because this is not a, I think this is an area that we really have to focus in on going forward. And, and I appreciate you wanting to make sure we're all on the same page, you know, with the goal-setting, to make sure that we all do that.
Well, I think we all want the same thing.
Right.
So I think we just need to communicate clearly with one another what those expectations are. And I think that we can very clearly see where we don't want to be.
Right.
So that will, that, to me, needs to strengthen our discussions moving forward.
It's a matter of categorizing expenses, and this is a legal expense. And so it has to be looked at. Each category has to be looked at and evaluated as far as do we, did we have input or do we have input?
That's correct. I don't disagree.
I think, is that what you're saying, Councilman Stevens?
It is. It's like we, we budget for streets, then we go back and we approve each street to be done. And in this case, absolutely. And I know it looks like it's concerned some of you to bring this up, but it's a big issue. And taking five minutes to talk about it, and it's taxpayers' money, is worth it in my mind. So I can sense that there's a frustration, but feel free to chime in.
I'm not frustrated at all. But I, I feel like we have discussed it and...
Well, we have, and look what we're doing today.
I think we're all on the same page.
I think we are.
We have, but like you're saying, look what we're doing today.
Well, we knew this was coming. This is not a surprise.
This isn't something new that's happened since we've had these discussions. I think we've had some really good discussions since...
Correct.
I've been with you. A lot of this stuff was way before that.
Oh, absolutely.
So I think moving forward, we're all...
But we have some on our forefront here that if we don't, if we're not on the same page, we're going to be back in the same spot.
All right. Thank you.
You know, the one thing that might help us look at this a little bit better or more favorably is, is that we might come under budget in some other areas to help make up for this. Because this is painful, to transfer this much money out of reserves to pay for a lawsuit, basically.
It's more than a lawsuit.
Well, the lawsuit's the majority of it.
Not in this budget year, I don't think.
No, I think that's where I'd like to see categorizing expenses, so that could be added up. You know, figures don't lie, but sometimes they're altered.
Well, I think ultimately, it goes back to, you know, whether, whether we categorize it or we don't, moving forward, it goes back to that solution-oriented behavior. And, you know, you legalize everything, or you have some open, honest discussions, and I think we can do better in all of that. Meanwhile, we need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to amend FY 2014 General Appropriations Act as presented.
I feel like we've been doing all the work on this side, fellers. Anybody want to support that?
Support.
Thank you. Thank you. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Then we have in our packet the minutes of boards and commissions. And this evening, we have the minutes from the Cadillac Wexford Transit Authority meeting from April 17th, along with the minutes of the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission that was held on April 14th. At this time...
Question?
Oh, we have a question from Councilmember Spelman.
Spelman, yes. About the minutes from the historic Courthouse Hill Historic District. It talks in here about getting a memo to council related to the Cobb's Mitchell Building. And I'm wondering if that's still coming or if that came and I missed it. It looks to me like that was developed, and I'm wondering...
It should be in your mailbox.
Oh, it's in my mailbox?
My mailbox is empty. Did somebody take my mail?
They were placed in all of your mailboxes. It's been a while back. We can, we'll add them again.
Is it in the minutes as well, though?
I'm not sure.
Jerry, would you mind just emailing that out to all of us?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be good. That's it? This, right? I know. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
The language of the memo is in the minutes as well, but we'll, we'll get that out.
All right. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for public comments. We ask that you keep it to three minutes, if you would, please. And then also write down your name and your address for us, if you would.
Good evening, council members. My name's Kathleen Mary Williams, and I am a registered voter in the city of Cadillac. And I was very impressed with the pledge for our flag for the state. And it made me wonder, do we have a city flag?
We do.
We do?
We do. I, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Dressing up and comment. We do. I don't believe there's any ordinance or other formal documentation that establishes a formal city flag, but we do have flags that show our Cadillac logo.
Oh, yeah. We used it at the conference.
Is there some reason why you couldn't get some made up so we could buy some?
I don't think anyone's ever asked.
Well, we'll put that in as a suggestion.
Thank you. The other thing I had a question about tonight is in your Article Six, Section D, about the closed session. If that is concerning the Blackburn case, is there a reason why that's excluded from the minutes or am I out of order or what?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
If it's, if it's...
If the closed session section here, if that deals with the Blackburn case.
When we go into closed session to discuss the Blackburn case, that is noted.
Yeah, it would be noted. Any pending litigation... Any pending litigation would be noted by the case, case name and number.
Okay, I know this is an old sore, and some of us think one way and some another, and we all have the right to do that. But I wonder if you've really considered if this case turned out in Mr. Blackburn's favor, is, do you have a guarantee from him or anything like that, that he wouldn't turn around and sue the city for more money? And, uh, that's all I have to say, but I really was impressed with the flag tonight. Thank you.
William, Michigan, Petrie Road. Councilman Stevens' comments, and I think what everyone was trying to say to City Manager Marcus was that, what I got sense was, is the money being spent wisely? I have employees that come to me and say, we need more money for contract services, and I ask why? Well, because we're hiring somebody to clean, to clean the business for us. Well, that's what you're supposed to be doing. So that's what I think people want to know, is what's it being spent on? And talked about accounting, and I understand there's some privacy issues, you can't go into each one in detail, but what is this money going toward in legal funds? And the other question I have is going back to the thing I brought up earlier about the MDOT property, is last week it was mentioned that it was zoned as a park, so somebody, I suppose, couldn't co-build a condo there. But if some private party bought that property, could they put no trespassing signs and close that off? I don't know if just having it zoned a certain way would protect us from being able to use that.
Good question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello.
Hi.
Kathy Foster, Chapin Street. And believe it or not, I have a question about sidewalks in the summer. Yeah, really.
Are you going to plow them?
I want to edge them. That's how bad I get, no. I, I live next to the famous six lots, Chapin Delmar Division. If somebody's piece of sidewalk, which is their responsibility, gets pretty bad and they don't care, does the city have the right to go in and say, fix it?
Uh, I believe there are standards that if it's, and please don't hold me to this as I just say it off the top of my head, I want to say if it's a two-inch grade difference, that we could require that it be fixed.
Be replaced. If it's just really old and all potholly and everything, trip on it, the city has the right to tag it or whatever you do.
I'd have to look into that. I know that if there's a two-inch difference in the grade, that we would, we could go in there and say it must be replaced or must be repaired. But I'm not, I'm not sure with respect to just, like, holes in it.
This would be a one-time thing because I'm old in that, those lots, I don't know if you guys know who I'm talking about, the old Franklin. Nothing's ever been there. You know, we get into the, the snow plowing and stuff, and of course, I don't know how many people own it. I hear there's six lots. The sidewalks are almost completely covered. There's no more, it's, it's all grass. It looks bad first, and then I think if somebody was to edge it, you know, you don't have to edge, what, 50 years? You know, but nobody's lived there, so nobody, it's, it's just bad. You edge that, somebody will get hurt on those sidewalks. And just because nobody's ever lived there, and I don't, it doesn't look good, can't you make the property owner replace that sidewalk? I mean, other people use that sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I don't know, sitting here right now, I'd have to send
Yeah. Yeah, but that's my question. I, I know that it's property, and then you get into that snow plowing, which I don't even want to get into, but this would only be a one-time maintenance, like I'm not asking somebody to fix that grass. It's almost completely gone. You can't even see the sidewalk anymore. So it'd be a one-time fix.
Could you leave your phone number?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I didn't know if, if the city, if it was like an ordinance where you get ahold of somebody, you know.
Usually it's good to bring those kinds of questions forward. And I've found this with a couple of things that have been brought to my attention, letting the crew know, and they'll
Right.
look into it for you right away.
Well, I know it's not city property, but, you know, for me to look into who owns it and whose responsibility, and it's not like it, it's a yearly thing, but it's never been done, and the sidewalk's gone.
Yeah.
And it, it looks bad.
Yeah, these, these folks are a good
Okay.
source to talk to. They can at least answer questions.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. If not, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And we'll head to the good of the order. And we will go ahead and start with Councilmember Melma.
All right. Today, I wanted to thank MMA and Rec Boats and Kelly Cater and their staff. They held a ins and outs of Michigan Unemployment Compensation System. And I don't know, some of you might not be aware, but they overhauled that system, and it's been just a nightmare for our manufacturers and our businesses. And we probably, or they probably had 40 individuals there, and it was excellent. They had the people from Lansing up, and they had all of them, in fact, there were eight of them that were up, and it was excellent, excellent seminar. So I want to thank Rec Boats and MMA for putting that on, along with Canva, of course. And then also want to talk about the Career Expo. That was last week. It was excellent. We probably had five, 600 students go through, had 30 employers there at least, 18 of them were manufacturers, a lot of applications taken. We hit all the different occupations. It was much better than last year. Students were much better prepared, lots of compliments. Wish we had more media coverage, but I've already covered that with the newspaper, right, Rick? And anyway, it was, it was excellent to see the turnout of five to 600 students. And they dressed, we got them to dress, and many of them, and ties, and cleaned up, and resumes, handshakes. I went out a week earlier and worked with a bunch of them. I do want to bring this concern. I've been out of the classroom for 10 years, and I interviewed maybe 25 students, practiced role-playing. And I mentioned this to our city manager, too, and it's a concern with our legislators. Probably only three out of the 20 have driver's license. Can't afford it. It's no longer offered in the schools, and they can't come up with
Driver's education.
250, driver's education, and they can't come up with the 250 to $350. And so that takes a whole level of young people out of our workforce. And how do you learn to work at an early age? And we all know that because I can see a lot of gray hair around here. And that's how we learned. And the thing is, is that, yeah, it's a real concern. These kids cannot afford to get driver's license, and then when they're 18, they go down and apply, but there's no driver's training before that. So that's kind of scary. So in our conservative thinking in Lansing, sometimes maybe we're, we're really not thinking long range on this. And that's a real concern because that takes a level of 16 to 18 out of the workforce. So, yeah, real concern. The other thing is, I met our new HR person there, and I also met him last Wednesday, Todd Kiway. Maybe I'm taking some of your thunder, but I met him, had a chance, and it was very good to see him and see him at the seminar. And I know that he got quite a bit out of our seminar today, so. And also, at our Issues in Coffee, met Mike Dolak's brother. And correct me, 40 years was he on city council and still on?
Still on.
Forty years.
Thirty years at Martin Short's.
And I'll tell you, I can't imagine 40 years. That is unbelievable. But he shared a lot of stories, a lot of similar problems that cities are going through. And so we had a very, very good, very good session last Wednesday. And Councilman Stevens even joined us. And I also attended the Lions and the Firemen fundraiser last Saturday, and that was excellent. And it, it was a good turnout and very entertaining, and Councilman Stevens played, and he's a pretty good basketball player, so.
Well, we didn't play ball.
But anyway, very good showing for our firemen in our city. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
The firefighting, I was going to just note on that, too, that it was, uh, well, well-attended. The funds actually go back, the funds that they get, the firefighting union, that goes back to our community through their charities and such, too. So it was nice to see that event. And speaking of Mr. Dolak, his brother, the one that was in city council, also used to be a professional ref.
Oh, that's right.
And the famous, if anybody's, the Tom Dempsey field goal.
He was a city council member for 50 years.
Yeah, but he's the famous one in the picture, the Tom Dempsey field goal, that's saying that that was the record-breaking field goal, and that's Mike Dolak's brother, so. It was cool for him to see some of the players. He actually reffed against a couple of them that have retired, so that was really nice. And wanted to thank the firemen for their contributions they give back to the community through that. On the, the park property, I know I did address that last week. I was hoping that we could get, just to make sure, I still feel this is something council needs to know, and other than finding out through the newspaper, we haven't been updated all on that issue. And I was hoping that we really could because I still, everything I read shows that the city council is, should be involved in that process, and it's been another two weeks. And I, hopefully, we'll have the council support that concept that we should be allowed to be part of that solution.
My understanding is that that is being put together for presentation in a couple weeks.
Perfect. Thank you. And then the last item I just wanted to address, I should have done this last time, since our, we know as a council that it has been addressed about a concern of me possibly with a conflict on the Blackburn case. It has since been addressed since our meeting with me, too. And I, I addressed it with Marcus and Mr. Homier just to say, I want to make sure that I do my charter and, I know there's been discussion of this, but of actually doing that formal, of letting the council make a decision on that. And especially since our last meeting, having it been addressed again by a spouse of a member of council, I just wanted to make sure that it gets addressed, and we do that just so it's on the record. And that way, there's no concerns it would be up to you guys either keeping me on the island or voting me off, sort of speak. So I would appreciate if that could be addressed now so that it's, it's out there and, you know, if you guys make a decision on that, would be appreciated.
The, I guess the request would be, you're looking for a motion to have yourself recused from the Blackburn
Discussion?
Discussion, or Blackburn case?
I don't know, however it is to allow the council to decide if I should be recused or not.
I don't think it's appropriate to do it right now, when it's not on the agenda, and we're not even discussing it now.
Well, I would
I don't feel prepared to vote on that right now.
Well, I would like to, well, I, again, here's a case that's been known
We don't have our attorney here.
for a week and a half, that I was liking this, but.
I just want to throw out, I think city council can take action if it desires to take the action. If you want it on a council agenda, we can put it on the council agenda. There's, I mean, there's a, if you want another legal opinion, we can have a conversation in a closed session.
I don't need a lea, no, no legal opinion. I just wanted, I, and I did, he's, they've known for a week and a half, I assume this would be fine, but this is just a decision of our group. I don't know if we, I mean, are getting input, you're wanting input from other people or, or
This is good of the order. I don't know about voting on whether you can recuse yourself.
Well, it's good that everybody else knew about it a week and a half. I didn't know that you were bringing that forward tonight.
Neither did I.
I, I did address it, but I also don't want something between now and our next meeting to come up that would, would put me at risk, so.
Well, again, it's good of the order, so.
Well, that's, that's fine. We've done that before, where it wasn't on agenda when somebody did, but if you're going to and something happens, at least it's on the record that I've attempted to have the council choose this.
Okay.
I thought, knowing that it did come from a spouse of one, I thought that might be something that would want to be
Can my husband call you? I hope not, because he'll be in trouble. That's a joke.
So I thought it might be something that would want to be addressed, but.
It probably should have been put on the agenda, then.
Can we get it on next time, in the beginning somewhere, so that if there is something that
Sure.
we can decide whether or not to let you off the, I mean, off the island?
But it is on the record.
Yep. It's very clearly on the record, so, perfect.
Okay, is there anyone else?
And that's it?
Okay, thank you.
Me? All right. I don't have a lot. One, I've heard from a couple of my neighbors that they have called Central Dispatch to ask for a city officer and have been told on two, at least, separate occasions that there's no officer available. And then spoke to the officer that was on duty that night, who said that he was available. So this is a concern to me, that if our citizens are calling Central Dispatch about a concern in their neighborhood and asking for assistance, and to be told that they weren't, no one was available, and then this person was even told after calling back that they would send an officer, but to their address for harassing the dispatcher for calling back. This is very odd to me. So I don't know who looks into that stuff.
Can you repeat that last part?
Um, when they, this person called back, they said they were told that an officer would be sent if they called again, but to their address, to be arrested for harassing I think all these are taped and on record. If I could have, give you further information about who this was, to get dates and stuff, but this kind of freaked me out a little bit. So, there's that. The other thing, what else was I going to talk about? I don't remember. So it mustn't be all that important. Bikes are out, kids are out on bikes, kids are out playing in the street, playing ball, slow down. You know, I know people come flying up the street, around my street a lot, and there's just little kids all over the place now. They're like little lemmings everywhere, like little zombies. My two, one and My two, one-and-a-half-year-old grandkids were over all weekend, and I was like a nervous wrack as I hear these "waaah!" and cars come flying up the street, and we're like hurting the babies. So please, slow down. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to everybody that MSU Extension is having an open house on Wednesday to celebrate one hundred years in Wexford County. You're all invited to attend. It's from three to five PM in the historic courthouse on the second floor. And we have some really good stories of the beginning of extension services, and some great photos.
You'll be there?
I'll be there, yeah. I'd also like to thank Baird Cutter and Bishop for their many years of auditing services. I'd like to thank Gabby, and she's not here, but hopefully she'll hear this, for all the great work she does in organizing the Freedom Festival. I know she took that on a couple, three years ago, and has really owned that, and you can tell. It shows, and it continues to grow, and that's good for the community. Tonight was the first night we approved closed-session minutes, and it was a new procedure for us, and it was an interesting procedure. And we're told that if we have any questions about them, then we have to go into closed session to discuss it. I was a little surprised, Councilmember Stevens, that you voted no on the consent agenda. And what that said to me was that you may not have agreed with something that was in those minutes. And, but I'll never know that, because we can't talk about it. And I guess, I, you know, I just, so I'm curious, but we can't talk about it now, because that needs to be discussed in closed session. So I'm just saying, if anybody has an issue with them in the future, hopefully we'll be able to do that, and take the time to do it. Marcus?
Thank you, Mayor members of the City Council. We will have an update on the state-owned property across the street from us at our next meeting. It's just taken us some time to try to put the slides together. Additionally, just a great thanks again to our finance department. Councilmember Stevens, you, you had made some comments about the budget book itself, which continues to win awards on an annual basis, as well as our audit heads, many times as well. But I, I think it's just a great testament to all the hard work that gets, that gets put into that document. And so it's very, very much appreciated. Additionally, just a quick thanks to the city staff that were involved over the weekend, making the Parks event happen, so, thank you.
Okay. Well, just to tag onto what you just said, specifically, I'd like to thank Tara Vedler. She did a lot of work for Saturday's event, and it was a bit chilly, but people were really enjoying themselves, and the parks are starting to look beautiful, so thank you very much for doing that. I got to ride around and be El Duman's co-pilot all morning, and so I got the, it's kinda like going behind the scenes at Disney to, to see everything, and his explanation, he's been doing it for a long time, so it was a lot of fun. And I really enjoyed the morning with you guys, so. I also wanted to share this evening that we have received a grant from Cadillac and Kellogg, the For Youth Endowment Fund of the Cadillac Area Community Foundation. We've received five thousand dollars for our bike Cadillac program. And if you remember, when we were at the summer conference down in Lansing, Cadillac was chosen as one of the, is it five communities?
I believe there's six or seven.
Six communities, okay. Around Michigan to receive an award for a program within their community. And ours is the Bike Cadillac program, which started out at the Mitchell State Park, and we repurposed bikes that had been brought in through confiscation, or abandoned, unclaimed, and we turned them in. They, they really looked great. They have the Cadillac logo on them. And they're put out at the park, at Lake, at the state park, and they are provided for people so that they can ride bike and come into the city. And so as part of that program, it was our desire to expand that program and bring it actually into the city. And so, after twenty-six, has agreed to be that second station. And so this grant will help us purchase the additional equipment, or things that we need to refurbish any additional bikes we have, but it also specifically will provide children's bikes for that program. So I think that's really exciting news.
Great. Do we have any money to develop that video that we need to develop for our presentation in?
Yes.
October?
We do.
September?
In fact, it's, we've already started getting some B-roll filming.
Great.
Oh, good.
Just the process of moving the bikes around, so.
That's wonderful. Thanks for that update.
Good, and this past week, I had the opportunity to go down to the American Legion, and the first poppy was purchased for their campaign. And I learned a little bit more about that program this week, and it's pretty amazing. I didn't realize that all those poppies are actually made, they, they started being made by veterans who were going through rehabilitation, and so they're all made by veterans. And they make like three-point-one million poppies, and they make over two million dollars in that fundraiser. That's pretty amazing, so. And then I also would say that the closed-session minutes this evening that we approved, it was very interesting and very different than from anything that I have experienced so far on the council, but I think it's good, and I think that it reinforces the fact that we certainly want everyone to know that we're doing things the way that we should. And I would agree with Councilmember Spoolman, because I felt like you were concerned about something. And so, you know, it was new to all of us this evening, but I would hope that in the future weeks, when we have to, we have to accept those, that if we have any questions or concerns, that we're willing to step into closed session and share that with one another. Because if we're gonna step through the process, we wanna make it as good for us, too, to make sure that we're doing it the way that we should, so we all benefit.
Will we do it right then, when we're?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we can't discuss it out here, and so normally, if there was something about the consent agenda, you know, the open meeting, that we would want to fix or change, we would do it in, oh, here, but we can't do that with the.
That's a good question, though. I wonder if we can move that consent agenda item to the end of the meeting, so we can continue our meeting and just address that agenda item later, so that people don't have to wait for us.
Approve those minutes at the end.
Or like if we're going into closed session anyhow?
Well, but we should make it part of our agenda, so people know what we're, we're doing.
Right.
So I do like that. We could ask Mike, he said normally this is how it would be done. That, you know, he said, if we make it, if we want to make it a part of what we do, this is normally how it's done, but we can ask him that.
Right, but if we, but if we don't really agree on it, and we need to go into closed session, we might be able to move that agenda item to later in the meeting.
That's why I hesitated, and I also had asked Mr. Petcha the tapes, and how long those are kept, because I think the tapes are very, very important to clarify the minutes.
I, I agree, but we've always kept the tapes, and so.
While there's a difference of, of opinion on how long we keep those tapes, so that was a question I'll take up later. But that was my hesitation, because I had some questions, too, but how do you, how do you ask those questions? You know, what's the vehicle in, in doing that? But the tapes are extremely important in clarifying what those minutes' intent was.
Right.
This is all, if I could just jump in, this is a good exchange of information or questions as well. And I would frankly say that we do need some of that direction from, from Mike on how to, how to handle the closed-session materials. I know we're looking at planning on being in a closed session coming up at our next meeting. We could perhaps add it as a part of the brief.
So your suggestion is, leave it where it was in the agenda, but if somebody has a concern, or we need discussion, then we move that discussion to the end of the agenda.
That way, everybody here with issues doesn't have to sit while we're in there going.
I think, I think that's a good idea. And then if there aren't issues, we can just get it done in the normal order of the agenda.
That's a good solution.
Well, yeah, 'cause I sensed I could see, 'cause I was a little concerned with reaction during discussions sometimes, that there would be some concern by some of you to have to go and do that, so I just figured.
Never, 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 never.
We got you on tape.
Yeah, no, there's, there's, no.
No, that would be appro, it would be appropriate.
So I just figured it's easier doing that than to.
Nobody did anything wrong.
But it also makes it better at the end of the meeting, so the public doesn't have to.
Yeah, wait.
Right, and nobody did anything wrong this evening. It was new, so.
And with, just real quick, in the closed session, too, I'd like to see us, even though the act says you have to keep them, the minutes for one year and one day, I'd like to see us consider a longer retention. That's a minimum, you have to keep them, but it doesn't mean we have to, at one year, one day, have to destroy them.
Okay, great. Okay, I think that that was all. So, let's make sure that.
I'm looking forward to reciting the pledge to the flag.
Awesome, you better be studying.
I put my, I'm achieving, I'm reading.
You did, okay.
What Mrs., what Mrs. Williams brought up, too, is.
If we have a Cadillac flag, it should be here.
Like, let's, let's put the Cadillac flag up in the, the flag in the chamber somewhere. 'Cause I think it's in a box.
Yeah, we should put it here.
Yeah.
Are you getting up?
We have, we've got copies for tonight, for tonight, we've got copies, and the future we'll put them out.
Okay. So we'll just go ahead and adjourn, and then we can take your, anything we want to, so, meeting adjourned.
Oh, I thought we were gonna do.
I used to say.
Oh, I am so sorry.